I call this regular Craven County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I welcome each and every one of you. Thank you for showing up and being here. Looks like the biggest part is staff, but again, welcome. You, I know you want to see our smiley faces and see what we're going to do. We have some special guests in here this morning that I will get to once we go through here. If I can remind everyone to please silence or put your phones, electronic devices on vibrate. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Booker.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner McCabe. Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Sampson.
Here.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Here.
Chairman Liner.
Here. If you'd please rise for the pledge and remain standing for the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, in Jesus' name, we want to thank you for today. Thank you for our salvation. The Bible says in First Timothy, Chapter 2, Verses 1 and 2, "I exhorte therefore that first of all supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings and for all that are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and honesty." Thank you for the representatives and employees of Craven County, the men and women of this Board of Commissioners, and for their families. We pray for their work, their wisdom, and their deliberations. We pray that you would forgive us our sins as individuals and as a nation. We are truly grateful that Jesus said, "And him that cometh to me, I will no eyes cast out." Please help us to glorify you this day with our lives. Thank you for Craven County and for America. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Okay, at this time, I'm going to take chairman's privilege. We have a special guest in here. We have Ms. Dre Nix, the Regional Vice President of Boys and Girls Club for the Coastal Plain. And we have the honor of having Camry Darnell, who's been elected for the Youth of the Year for the City of New Bern and the Boys and Girls Club. We welcome, Ms. Nix, would you come up and give a little spill on Ms. Darnell?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, and thank you all for having us here this morning. I think there might have been some mixed up with our dates, but we're in the middle of summer camp running two sites here. But I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce you, Camry Darnell. She's been a member of the New Bern Boys and Girls Club for going on four years now. And she just recently was named the New Bern Youth of the Year. And she will be representing Craven County. This is our second year in a row having a Craven County rep at the North Carolina Commissioners Association Meeting. So we're very proud of her. She's also preparing for the 2019, this year's competition for the 2020 Youth of the Year. So we wish her all the best, but this is part of the job of being Youth of the Year and representing our county and the organization. I just want to say again, thank you to the City of New Bern for, you know, just really accepting Boys and Girls Club and helping us grow as we have in the last four years. If ever you have some time over lunch or so, the next couple of weeks, our summer camp is right here at the Harrison Center. Just stop by and say hi. I know the kids would love to see you and be introduced to you. So thank you all for the time this morning.
Thank you, ma'am. I just got one thing for the general public out there. This is not a selection that's taken lightly. It's not a selection that's taken by the New Bern Boys and Girls Club. This is, this is a committee that was selected, and I was fortunate enough to be on the committee last year to select the last year's winner. Young lady, I congratulate you and honor you because it's, it's a big challenge to go up and stand in front of the people that's on that board, the questions that we ask you and everything else. So you're a representative of our youth and we're very proud of you.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.[294.14][294.14][applause] Board have anything to say? Anything they want to make?
I'd just like to say I'm just so proud that we have a group of young people that want to see their city and county grow. And we can grow together as citizens. And we can make an impression on other young people and adults that we need their help also. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
And what's good, she brought her young sister with her to get her going with her too as well. And I know you all have to leave, but thank you so much. And we'll see you at breakfast.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Got a motion and a second?
Yeah, I'd like to take this time, Mr. Chairman, to add a resolution. I think everyone has a copy of it, at least it's right up on top there on the calendar.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we amend the motion to add a resolution and make that 1C?
So moved.
Separate, motion and a second, separate from the consent agenda. It'll be a separate item. We'll do the consent agenda, 1A and B, and then I'll call on 1C for the resolution for Department of DOT. That's the motion and the second. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And that's approved, the agenda is done. All right, next is consent agenda, minutes of July 1, 2019, tax releases and refunds. Receive a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Liner.
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda, 1C is a, I've got it here, resolution, resolution supporting the intent to the North Carolina Department of Transportation to install split-side street signal phasing at the intersection of U.S. Highway 70 East and Thurman Road in Craven County. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Booker.
Thank you. The meeting I had a few weeks back with the residents of Carolina Colors, the number one issue that was on their agenda, and a passionate one, was their concern about the dangerous intersection as people are leaving their community turning onto 70. As it turns out, as that community has grown, the traffic has gotten substantially more intent. And they called it bumper cars. When they come out of that community to turn left to go into New Bern, the cars coming from the other way have trouble seeing. The intersection is not lined up directly, and there have been a number of collisions, including a very serious one there about two weeks ago. So this resolution is for the state DOT to split the signal so that it would be green from one side, and then that would go red, and then it would green from the other side. So the cars would not be competing as they cross that intersection. So that's what this resolution is, giving our recommendation that that be done.
All right, we have, receive a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, Craven County Schools Budget Amendment. Mr. Stacy Lee, Chief Officer, Systems and Operations. Mr. Lee, thank you, sir.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. Chairman Liner, Vice Chairman Mark, and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. I found out about this Friday at 5:00, and I was coming to present, and I said, well, can you tell me what I'm presenting? So anyway, Dr. doled us in her regrets, so you definitely have the second string this morning. You should have the request to authorize a transfer of capital funds that were originally slated for bathroom addition at Grand A. Barton Elementary for an HVAC replacement at H.J. McDonald. The, before Florence, we ended up, we had an issue with the HVAC at H.J. McDonald. And we desperately need to get that replaced. As you can imagine, no air-conditioned and middle school boys is a deadly combination at times. So we really need to get the air-conditioned replaced there. The Grand A. Barton bathrooms, we're doing a long-range facility plan, as you know. And part of that delay is seeing what comes out of that long-range facility plan as far as the bathroom addition for Grand A. Barton. You have the estimates in front of you, so it'd be a transfer of the authorized funds that have already been approved from the Grand A. Barton to the HVAC replacement at H.J. McDonald. And happy to entertain any questions.
Receive a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Let's make sure the public and everybody is aware. This project was approved approximately three years ago for Grand A. Barton. And the cost came in double, and it was put on hold until then. And like they say, a facility study has been directed by the school board for the results of that. So money has already been allocated, already in their account, while we're doing is transferring it from one account to another account. Is that not correct? Finance officer?
Correct. It just go over from last year, we're just re-approaching here.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, and no other discussions. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Liner.
Yes. Mr. Lee, you made it easy.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next on the agenda, Department Matters, Carts Rural State Operating, RSO Grant, Kelly Walker, and Jeff Wood.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've had our public hearing on this, and then Kelly made an introduction the last time, so told her I would volunteer to come up on the last round here. Again, a little bit of background, this desire from our existing industry has actually predates me. These were conversations that were going on with folks like Moe and looking for solutions, much like I've found through my existing industry calls since I have been here. Two impediments to these unfilled workforce positions that we have, one is housing, the other one is transportation. And so this is one of many ways that we're going to continue to look at trying to figure out how to get people to work. I can say that, another example, I met with Chatsworth Friday to talk about some of the investments that the public has made in them and their expansion. Good news is, is they continue to go well beyond their capital expenditure of what they said they were going to do in their grant, and they continue to move forward hiring people. They're excited about this project as well. So it's one of those where everyone kind of sees a need. It's not 100% solution. It wouldn't have been if we were fortunate enough to be able to get the full funding. There are always going to be things that my office is going to have to do to try to figure out how to tackle some of these problems. And some of them aren't always easily done. But I'd like to remind everybody that 50 or 60% solution is better than a 0% solution. The, one thing that I think is important is, is that it shows our industry leaders, our employers, that we're listening to them and trying to figure out ways to solve some of these obstacles in way of being able to employ people and keep them employed. It would not be a surprise to me at some point in time if I'm coming in front of you a presentation on a housing development because it's what's needed right now. A lot of times, my office does unique problems and unique solutions to those problems. And also, I want to say that it's something that I'm really proud of as far as being a new Craven County. It's something that I've been able to brag about in social media, not specifically this grant, but the fact that we go and find out what the problem is for our existing employers and try to solve, solve these problems. Because I guarantee you that those companies that we try to recruit here are going to be asking the same kind of questions. Workforce is going to be an issue across the board. So really excited to be able to promote that as an opportunity for us to be able to say to the world, we hear problems and we saw, we find solutions. And then on the, the end of it, I specifically want to talk about the demographic that these folks that are going to need as public transportation will be. I remember whenever I was a kid, whenever I first started my job, the one thing I did have, not much, but I had a junker car that I had to work on every time I had to go to work. When I turned it into a little bit of an entrepreneurial thing, I made sure that all my coworkers knew that I was there as long as they could pay for the gas. So, but sometimes that car didn't work. And I wasn't fortunate enough to grow up in an area where there was a car. So really excited about this opportunity. Like I said, it's not going to be the 100% solution. I'm going to have to go back into my office and start looking at different things, some on the private sector possibly. And I have looked at those before, but I think this is a good start. And I think that it allows us to have a bridge to continue to look for other solutions. So at that, I'll answer any questions or Kelly, if you have any additional pieces?
Jeff, before I answer to the board, I'd like for you to explain more.
Sure.
The understanding in a relationship, because it says rural.
Yeah.
Because you put, explain to me, explain to the board exactly what you explained to me. Because it's assumed or expected that the City of New Bern can't use it. Explain to me, explain it to the board the way you explained to me that it's a company, it's in a rural, you know, vice versa.
Yeah, and there's some details on this with Kelly might be able to answer a little bit better, but it's important to understand that, that several different things. One, this will subsidize people that live in the rural part of Craven County to be able to go to work. Period, as we look at experimental routes, that's what this is about. That doesn't stop somebody from New Bern to be able to get on the bus and be able to get to work. It's just that this grant was specifically geared towards the rural areas. Also, it's important to note that the industrial park is in a rural designated area. And so that also helps expand the number of people that could qualify for this grant. Is that correct, Kelly?
Correct. And individuals that live in the urbanized area, if they are going to an employer that's in a rural area, they are still eligible for this program. So the only individuals that would not be eligible was, is someone who is starting in an urban location and ending in an urban location. As long as one point of the trip is in a rural area, then it qualifies as a rural trip.
And that's the primary reason for this grant, sir, I'm sorry.
And the industrial park is considered in the rural area.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And the number one reason we needed this grant was to be able to get the data on both sides. The private side needs this information as well. It's a chicken and egg kind of thing. So if we get the data, then we can sustain these programs. That's the data that we need, we can sustain these programs. So it's still doing what its primary function was to do.
Explain to this board also, by growing it, this is an experimental program or a new program, that if it does grow at whatever magnitude, when we submit our grant application that Kelly submits next year, this money rolls into that and becomes automatic into the Carts program in the future. Is that not correct?
Yeah, that's correct. That's exactly, that's what the grant is actually for, is to fund projects that are not feasible at this point in time.
Right, but there's, there's no guaranteed, guarantee of funding. It's an application each year?
Yeah, but it's, excuse me, but I mean, our Carts is never guaranteed. But we roll it in as far as our grant application, as far as our funding amount, correct?
I'm not sure I'm understanding the question.
Okay, you put, you put in a grant funding each year for Carts?
Yes.
Okay. This year, next year, based on how much it's costing you for this new program, that cost will be rolled into your grant application. Is that not correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I'm trying to get. Because you already spelled it out in here.
Yeah.
The grant's not approved, the program's not approved.
Correct.
Correct.
Right. All right, entertain a motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussions? Roll call?
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir, I do. I have been looking at the public transportation in Craven County for three, three and a half years, predating Florence. As Jeff and Kelly both stated, what we have here is a rural program. If it's in the industrial park in a rural area, it qualifies as a rural program. Some of our, some of the workforce comes from rural areas, some of it comes from our urban areas. Before Florence, 50% of the people in the inner city of New Bern did not have cars. Okay, you can get a ride to the doctor's office, and you can get a ride to the grocery store. But getting a ride Monday through Friday there and back is a little different situation. I can guarantee you that less than 50% of the people now have cars because so many of them flooded. I'm also familiar with, for example, with, with people in challenging situations or trying to pull themselves up, who were in the Housing Authority that I worked with for close to four years, who had a job and were in the situation of either, but they had to get to that job in the industrial park. Either they could put their children in daycare, or they could buy a car. But they could not do both. And what ended up happening is they had to turn down the job because they, I mean, there was not enough money to stretch to both places. So if we say we support people pulling themselves up, then this is not supportive services. This is an economic development issue. I am horribly disappointed that any senior government official and/or private businessman in this community or in Craven County thinks that transportation of the workforce to the workplace is not an economic development issue. It absolutely is. And the other thing that I think is, is being overlooked, we've had these requests from two of our major employers. If we do not attempt the trial to get the workforce to them, we will be branded as unresponsive. And that is correct, we will be. And when we start to recruit or attract other employers here, they're going to reach out to the folks who are already here and say, is the county, is local government, is the business community supportive of your needs? And so if we turn down this trial, the answer is going to be, no, they're not. And this is a competitive environment, and we need to look at the big picture here. It's a trial. If it doesn't work, then we're not out anything, and we move on to, to, to the next trial. But I think we owe our big employers, I think we owe the citizens of this community the trial to see if better transportation to their workforce will help fill these positions and employ more people. So, Mr. Chair, that's my soapbox.
Sir.
I think this is important.
Yes, yes, sir.
You got in the, our agenda that you're estimating about 1,560 trips would be able to be served as a result of this funding. I mean, how many citizens can you, do you think you're going to be able to serve?
It's been hard to be able to quantify that even from asking Moe and Bosch those numbers because of the fact that it's a, it's a service that's not there yet. So knowing how many people, individuals are going to be able to take it, take advantage of it, is, is hard to nail down whether you're talking about, one, taking several trips, much like what you said, Commissioner, that people progress. You know, once they've got the job, Kelly's mentioned this as well in our, in our briefing, they, they start to have cash flow and they can buy a car. And so that means that maybe they planned on using it for a month, they used it for less than a month, and then the services go on. The important thing is, is that that 1,500 passengers or trips will give us the data we need to be able to successfully or competitively apply for continued funding.
What kind of criteria are you going to use to determine who can utilize it? I mean, let's say you don't have a number that you're giving me, so.
Yeah.
I'm going to say 50 people won't utilize the service, and you can't carry but 40 people. I mean, are you, is it a first-come, first-served basis? I mean, what, what kind of?
My office will be the one that will be managing the communications, the kickoff part to the employer so that, first off, we can manage expectations that this is a pilot program. That way, people aren't thinking that this is something that, that it's not. We want to ensure that we're accurately telling people what's going on. And then, and I don't want to speak for Kelly on her department, but the idea is, is exactly what you just said. Within a month or two, my guess of the program, we're going to know quickly whether or not there's enough flow of traffic or passengers to be able to say whether this is going to be feasible or not, based off the percentage of people that are riding on the buses, both, again, those that are being subsidized by this grant as well as those that aren't.
But I guess the question, and I don't think I answered, Kelly, you have guidelines and qualification procedures of who can use this procedure, right? That's put down by the state in Carts?
Well, this is a competitive grant, so we write it the way.
But I'm talking about the people writing it, qualifying.
No, the requirements are that it served a rural population. Got the exact wording on the application. We would rely heavily on the employers to identify and verify that these are indeed trips for individuals that have need of transportation and do have employment at their facility. So there will be coordination in that aspect.
And then it's also important to note, there are some companies within the industrial park. It's probably not going to help. Cravenwood Energy is a, is a power plant, and so therefore, most of the people that work there have wages where they already have jobs or have cars. So think about exactly what we're providing, the services we're providing. It's going to hit a specific demographic of those that are either in need, starting off their life and trying to make a decision between daycare and a car, or those that have the unfortunate situations like I did as a kid, that, wow, you can only get that car to start so many times, so.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Roll call?
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Liner.
Yes. One thing I'd ask manager, I'd like this board to be kept up to speed once this program gets on a monthly basis of how we're rolling on this.
Absolutely.
How things are going.
Yes, sir.
Jeff, Kelly, thank you for all the hard work, the initiative, but going after it and everything else. Sorry we weren't able to go forward with it. But I want to let the public be aware, and I want to thank this board for what it just did. I mean, this board realizes what Carts is. It realizes that we've always said that Carts was going to stand on its own two legs and be self-sufficient. It's disappointing that our leadership in our municipalities does not feel Carts is an economic development issue or an economic engine. And I appreciate this board stepping up and taking the leadership to get this started and going. It will either succeed or it will fail, but I feel that it's going to be successful. I think people will use it to get the job. And it shows, like Commissioner had said, it shows our employers, at least we're trying, and we're looking at solutions to see what we can do. The people take it, fine. If they don't, they can't say we didn't make an effort on that. So I appreciate this board stepping up and having the foresight to stand up saying it's, it's needed. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman, before you leave, I'd just like to say that in order to be able to continue, continue in the county and the city, the city is a part of the county, but I can't, I cannot understand how we try to, try to separate our city of one from another, because what affects, what affects the county affects the city, what affects the city affects the county. As long as we try to split ourselves up, we're not going to be successful. But I found out a long time ago, working together, you can do great things. But working separate, you're going to destroy one another.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, Emergency Service Township 6 Volunteer Fire Department, request for new truck purchase. Pete Bradison.
It's my pleasure to be here, Commissioners. I'm Pete Bradison with Township 6 Fire Department. I've been a member there for approximately 32 years, still an active member. I get to see George there quite often because Commissioner Liner is our district commissioner for that area. I've known him for a number of years. What we're doing right now is we are, want to go into an agreement with one of the finance companies in New Bern, or actually in Havelock, which would be First Citizens Bank, to purchase a equipment truck for the use at the fire station. Currently, we are using a 1996 Ford F., one, or F., excuse me, a Ford Crown Victoria that we got from the Sheriff's Department a number of years back. The car currently is, at times, does not make it to calls, and sometimes it makes it to, makes it to the call and gets towed back to the station. And we've been keeping this thing running this way for the last couple of years, and we've decided it was time to replace it. We're looking at purchasing a 2019 F-350 with a utility bed on the back, a four-door crew cab. This would give us a reliable piece of equipment to use on traffic accidents and service calls. We would like to go ahead and finance it. We put that in our budget for this year, so it wasn't a, you know, it wouldn't be as surprising as the Commissioner. So it wasn't a, you know, it wouldn't be as surprising to the commissioners. And we are asking authorization to go ahead and do the purchase of the vehicle and the financing.
Okay, receive a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Ready?
Roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yep.
Chairman Liner?
Yes.
Pete, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Gentlemen, Madam Commissioner, thank you.
Stanley, you got something?
Just real briefly, I would just like to also add that what this vehicle will do is it will add an additional service vehicle to their fleet, which will also help them with their ISA rating and their due inspection ratings for that station. So it'll be extra equipment for the area. Thank you.
Mr. Stanley, would you, Mr. Chairman, can you, Stanley, would you just quickly brief the meeting that Director Spraberry had here last week? Just quick, two or three sentences on what that meeting was about?
It's called the Crest, the Coastal Regional Evacuation and Shelter Plan that we had some issues during Florence in trying to activate that program, which has been in place for a number of years. And they've identified the deficiencies in trying to use some of the pre-identified counties that are supposed to be host counties. So there's two things going on. One is they're trying to get a recommitment from those inland counties to do host sheltering as well as they're looking at, I think they call it mega-capacity. They don't really call it a mega-shelter, but they're looking at some larger facilities, both public and private, that the State Emergency Management Office is supposed to be contracting with. So that moving forward in the future, even if the inland host shelter fails, there'll still be a second option for us to be able to get through that decision process and moving people forward faster.
So what we, we have a sister county somewhere inland, I think it's Johnson.
Johnson, currently, Wilson lost their site, so it's only Johnson.
Counties, that's our tier one. Tier two would be Wake, and then the third tier would be, as Stanley mentioned, a large shelter somewhere else that the state would then open and we'd send our folks to. The key to us, what we try to impress upon, is the timing of it. Soon as we know that one of these shelters is going to open, we can start directing people there. But until we know that, it's very difficult for us to make decisions locally. Chairman Mark, you'll remember this, you know, you do a mandatory evacuation, but you don't have a place for people to go. So the coordination here, and I'm really thankful that Director Spraberry came down to try to work through some of those issues with us last week.
Well, another thing, if I might remind you, they, they have seven different counties labeled for that same inland host county. So if it's as big as Florence, where seven, all seven counties have to move, they identify, you know, they understand that's not going to work. So they're going to automatically have to go to the next level to be able to facilitate getting something done in a timely fashion. So if it was just a hazmat incident or an isolated incident, and it was only going to be one county to one in a host county, it might be reasonable, but they've identified, they've got way too many populations identified to go into a potential shelter of five hundred. So it's, it seems to be coming together more effectively than what it has been in the past.
Okay, keep in mind also, if you've been following Barry, I mean, they have done that. I mean, this would be a good example, hopefully some lessons learned, because they did do a mega-shelter up in Mississippi, out of New Orleans and further in. So that's probably the first one I've seen down in that area where they moved them out into, and they call it a mega-shelter setup and everything else. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Coming from the Gulf Coast, either hurricane alley or evacuation alley, depending on how you look at it, one of my concerns in this area has been that evacuation orders are issued too late. When the hurricane is bearing down on you and going to be there in thirty-six to forty-eight hours, that's not the time necessarily to be on the road or to start everybody getting on the road with traffic backups and everything else. And I know part of the issue has been we didn't have shelters to send people to. You can't tell people to evacuate unless they have some people, someplace to go. So I applaud this effort in getting it moving. My question is, in terms of updating these and being more, making these plans more realistic, do you have a timeline, a goal over when the, these revised plans will be completed? I mean, is this, you know, is this a five-year effort or is it a six-month effort?
That's an ongoing, in fact, the county manager was talking about this the other day. There's several things ongoing as we speak to, to get things straightened up somewhat. But I would like to comment on the evacuation timeline. That timeline is based on not just when we want to do it, but it's based on a point of no return, based on evacuation studies, several evacuation studies that say, based on the transportation components and the highway systems, we must give at least that much notice prior to the arrival of gale force wind and rain. But when we start looking at having to go out and publicly pick people up and actually move them, we've recognized we've got to add to that window.
That's right.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Mitchell, I think, you know, from what we heard from the state leadership was, we love to have a signed, sealed, delivered plan, but it's fluid. They have a contract one year with a certain facility and they may lose that facility the next year. So they're constantly moving facilities and chasing them around, Stanley. But I think from the tier system, the sister counties, they're within weeks of finishing that. I think this whole tour was part of finishing that plan.
That's very encouraging, thank you.
It is encouraging, but I'll tell you, again, I still kind of agree with Stanley. We still may be pushing too much to one county. If that county tends to say, hey, we might still be in some effects here too, and they don't open, then we're going to constantly, we're going to, we're going to skip all the steps and go straight to the mega-shelter. Because no, no one, there's no reason nobody thinks I ninety-five, basically.
So you need to plan A, B, and C.
That's correct.
Well, and if I might add, also with today's technology and the readync.gov app, once you open a shelter, it's immediately available for information to whomever. It may not even be someone we're trying to move, but that, that cap will reach, it'll cap out really quick. They'll show up, they may come from South Carolina.
You're singing to the choir. You're singing to the choir.
We've experienced that over-
One of my concerns is it only takes one accident on seventy to have thousands of cars sitting there with a storm bearing down.
We've also been talking with our neighbors, like Carter County, for example, that, to help us with that, they need to pull the trigger a little sooner so that we don't get everybody on the road at one time.
Yeah, it's got to be coordinated. So thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Stanley.
Stanley, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, health pay adjustments for contract providers, Scott Harrelson.
Scott, it's Monday, I'm surprised you're even here.
Good morning, Commissioner. Here, happy to be here. I'm coming to ask for your assistance on, on this matter of the rate adjustment for our contract providers. We are in a health professional shortage area. And east of I ninety-five, it is very difficult to place providers, even in the private sector. Very difficult for public health departments to place qualified providers. Talking about a physician and three nurse practitioners. We have a number of contract providers, and it seems to work well for us here because it offers flexibility. These are independent contractors, and some work two days a week, some work three days a week, some work four, five days a week. We are very fluid in our staffing. One day they'll be in a child health clinic, the next they may be in an adult clinic, the next they may be down in our Havelock clinic, providing coverage there. Here recently, we had a shortage in our maternity clinic. And one of our federally qualified, one of our providers in the FQHC actually moved over. They were not paid out of FQHC dollars, they were paid out of maternity dollars to provide the coverage for our maternity clinic when one of our providers went out on a medical leave. So they are, they are very flexible and cover a lot of aspects. And face it, without your providers, you do not have a clinic. They are the engine of, of our department. And I think that they do a fantastic job, and that's why I'm here. And we also had a salary survey put out by the State Community Health Center Association. And once we looked at those figures, we saw that, you know, they, they were below the average for the physician. And once you count in for the benefits, the, the nurse practitioners as well. So a lot of good reasons or, a lot of reasons why I think it would be a good idea to give them a two percent contract increase.
Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, you know, and, and looking, I mentioned that the state average. That average is different from county to county, though. I noticed that in Charlotte, the pay was a little bit higher, and Durham is a little bit higher. And we're basically using the same rates as Durham and Charlotte here in New Bern.
Well, the, the rates or the averages that, that I provided were the statewide average for the community health center. And you're right, Commissioner Mark, and a lot of times in the rural areas, what I've found over time is that they actually wind up paying more than the larger areas because they have to, yeah, to, to try to attract somebody.
Yes, sir.
Serving on the health board for the last seven months has been an education for me. I had no idea what all went on in that building. For the public, one of the aldermen in the city of New Bern just said to me recently that, that they had no idea the extent of what that building and services, what they provide. I recently went to my physician for an annual physical. And he is really seriously concerned. He said, we cannot hire entry-level doctors to be, I guess you would call them interns, a doctor that's not specializing. He said, all the young doctors, excuse me, that are coming out of medical school, they all want to specialize. They all want to get into a specific, special spot. And he said, just to get a regular practitioner to come in and serve, he said, we can't get them. He said, what's going to happen in the future, and this is in the private sector now, is that we're going to find ourselves going to the doctor and we're going to be seeing a, a PA. We're not going to even get to see the doctor unless it's really serious. So we've got some good folks here, particularly the, the doctor that's listed here. And I strongly support doing what we have to do to keep these people on board. So that's, I, I don't know that the general public realizes that. And, and the other thing he said was that, that, I'm not going to get into Obamacare, but he said, that's when the thing really started going downhill. And the amount of time that they have to spend beyond working and seeing patients, doing paperwork to satisfy the, the government is, is astronomical. So I, I, these are professionals that have, that have gone to school for a long time to, to get to where they are. So I strongly support this, this, this move.
Any other comments, questions? Adam Clark?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Liner?
Yes.
Thank you for your support, much appreciated.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next on the agenda, social services, Jeffrey Merritt, DSS Director.
Commissioners, thank you, county manager. Got three agenda items I'd like to bring to your attention today. I'll start with the first one, and that is, we have rolled forward a fund from last fiscal year from our special adoption funds.
Jeff, let me, let me stop you right there. This is one that got changed, right? This is the handout that you gave us?
Yes. Jeff, we were sent the budget change after the fact, so they do not have the revision. Well, I just gave them the revision this morning.
The new handout that Nan handed out to you is the actual budget amendments and not what's in your package.
So you may want to make sure you're talking about the right figures, Jeff, so that-
I'll, I'll speak about this as well.
Sorry, sir.
The special adoption fund, what we have from last fiscal year, eighteen, nineteen, that rolled, that we would ask to be rolled forward is thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And what those funds do, it helps us promote and recruit for foster and adoptive parents and promote adoptions with children that are hard to place and find adopted homes for. Some of the things we do with that is on our recruitment of those homes, if there's special, maybe one-time calls to assist, like training, therapies, things such as that, to try to make those placements stable so those children can have a safe and stable home throughout their life and as they are, you know, brought to adulthood. And six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars is additional funds that we have received. Those funds are awarded by the state, and there are some specific specifications for that. Some of those are if you adopt a sibling group of three, or you have a child that you adopt with special needs, or if we meet our baseline for adoptions, that the state looks, the number of adoptions we do each year. If we exceed those, then we receive funds to continue to try to promote adoption. So I can't tell you which one of those specifics that meant for the six thousand, seven hundred. I think it was an adoption of a sibling group of three or more is that specifically difficult to do when you try to keep sibling groups together.
Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Liner?
Yes.
Our next two agenda items are connected, they are related to our Home Care Community Block Grant, and we are asking to adjust our current budget to the actual budget that we received. Those funds actually came out, are going to be moved to the Home Delivering Meals Program. If you will see in your agenda item, that total, including the county match, and the transfer of other funds would be about eleven thousand, two hundred and forty-nine on that first one. If you have any questions there.
Sheave a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? One question for the manager. This match is across the board for everyone, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we all understand that. Hey, entertainer, go ahead. Roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Liner?
Yes.
And the last agenda item is, we have the Home Care Community Block Grant paperwork. And what that paperwork does is just to reflect the budget, budget amendment that you just approved. And we have to turn that into the area agency on aging, so we can enter those funds to be able to draw those down to pay for the services. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those as well.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, y'all have a good day.
Okay, moving on, planning subdivision for approval, Chad, Assistant Planning Director. Chad, good morning.
Good morning, folks. How are y'all?
Good.
We got one subdivision for approval today. On May the twenty-third, the planning board recommended the following subdivision for approval, which is Croatan Crossing Townhomes, Section One, Phase Four, for final. The property is owned by LRH Development LLC and surveyed by Brad Sut. Property is located within Township Six off of Catfish Court. As you can see from the map up here, right out here is Highway Seventy. And Catfish Lake Road. As you cross the railroad tracks, take a right, and Catfish Lake, Catfish Court is right here, this close enough. Subdivision contains nine lots on point eight-three acres. And the lots will be served by Craven County Water and the City of New Bern Sewer. Here's a presentation of the map as submitted and approved by the planning board. In order for this map to be approved and recorded, it has to have approval by the Board of Commissioners.
Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is this in a floodplain?
This section is not in a floodplain, sir.
Okay. Chad, me and you've been out there a number of times. Are you happy and satisfied that they're meeting? We've always had a drainage problem out there, drainage, culverts and everything else. Are we, because we haven't had any problems out there in the last couple of years.
Right.
Because we put the big ones in and everything else. Is this one putting in the large culverts, meeting what he's-
Well, our, our developer here is here today, Rick Shepherd in the back. And working with him closely and his engineer, we feel that we've done everything that we can do as the developer and as the county to help solve those issues in that subdivision.
Okay, because you know my feelings on that place out there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, before we get into, I'm going to ask someone to come up. Okay, before we get into, I'm going to ask someone to come up. I'm going to put her on the spot and see if she has anything to say. Ms. Katie, I'm not going to pronounce your last name, because I'm not going to butcher it, but would you like to come up and introduce yourself to the board? I don't think the whole board knows you. And Ms. Katie is the new director of the COG, and we welcome you. I've had a couple of meetings with her, and she's a pleasure so far to work with, but I'm sure we'll beat her up badly. I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, Chair Liner. My name is Katie Bourdais. As you hear me speak a little bit more, you'll know I'm from the South and grew up in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. The bulk of my work has been in North Carolina, though. I'm the executive director for the Council of Government, the Eastern Carolina. We represent you all. We thank you for your membership. I've met with Commissioner Liner and your county manager and your assistant county manager and your economic developer planner or director. And I'm just attending as many meetings as I can to hear what is important to you all as a board, and if you were to have a public forum, what would be important to your residents. As you all know, we do all the aging. We do something that you approved today with the Meals on Wheels. We do things with the adult care facilities. We have an ombudsman division. We have two that go into to make sure that the facilities are in compliance. We also do the regional planning and development, and we do the regional planning and development for transportation. So I was merely coming just to see how you all conduct business and to hear what the issues were, but did not know I was going to say anything, so off the cuff, that's what I have to say. But thank you for welcoming me.
No, ma'am, it wasn't. It was meant to put you on the spot. You're here. Most of the board has not met you or seen you, and we welcome you.
Thank you.
We really do.
Thank you.
To come up to our meetings and everything else and...
Yes, I'll be back.
You should be recognized. You, you support us and provide service to us, so we appreciate what you do.
Appreciate you all, and I'm a resident of your county.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, appointments pending and current. You see the pending list. Current appointments expiring in August. Emergency Medical Service Advisory Council, all wish to be reappointed. Michelle Smith, Brian McGuire, Crystal Two. Do we have a nomination?
Some move.
Second.
Any other discussions on those? Hearing none, will go by acclamation. Farmers Relief Fund Board of Trustees, both wish to be reappointed, and Mark Dale and Daniel New, both from District Two.
Some move that they be reappointed, Mr. Chairman.
Any others nominations? Hearing none, by acclamation. Upcoming appointments expiring in August is Craven County Clean Sweep, Barbara Smith and Judy Lloyd, Riverbend Board of Adjustment, Kelly Forrest, and Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Eileen Medville.
Most of the questions are for the Riverbend Board of Adjustments. I'm assuming that has to be a person from Riverbend.
Well, it actually has to be somebody from Riverbend ETJ, which is very challenging because it's a very small area. Well, why don't I get the GIS to create you a, which we've done before, an address list of who's in that ETJ and have you review it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, here comes our defining moment. Mr. Attorney.
I've been introduced many ways, Mr. Chairman. Never liked that, though. Thank you. Two items for the board's consideration today. The first is a county-owned property that was acquired through a tax foreclosure. This is an initial offer, which of course, if the board approves, will be subject to upset bids, and will come back before the board for final approval at a later date. The property is fifty-four-hundred County Line Road in New Bern. The parcel number is seven oh five three double zero five A. The bid amount or offer amount is seven thousand dollars. The total taxes and cost of the foreclosure were seventy-eight, forty-two and five cents, and the current tax value is forty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. I will note that the property is not in the best condition, hence the bid amount and the difference between that and the actual assessed value. The board's inclined to go forward. We would need a motion second and an affirmative vote to accept the initial contract, put it out for upset bids.
Some move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the second matter today involves the county's animal control ordinances. As the commissioners are aware, the decision was made some months ago to shift the animal control functions from the Health Department over to the Sheriff's Department. One legal footnote with that is that our ordinances are all drafted, for the most part, with references to the Health Department and Health Department representatives, animal control officers, and they just don't fit now that that process is in transition. So we have to update our ordinances to basically change those references from the Health Department over to the Craven County Sheriff and the Sheriff's Department. In your agenda packet today was basically all the animal control ordinances redlined to to make those changes. To implement the changes, the board would need to hold a public hearing, ideally at the next meeting, and then at that meeting, consider the ordinance and vote on it and go from there. I will note that none of the proposed changes go to the substance of the ordinances. None of the things that the board has dealt with over the years and ordinances that were on the books. My thought, if the board wanted to get into the substance of the ordinances, to make that a separate discussion, because right now, we really need to transfer the enforcement to the Sheriff's Department, and then if we need to tweak this requirement or that requirement, let's have that as a separate discussion, simply because I could see that having much more public input and much more consideration by the board than what I would call some technical changes at this point. And so again, Mr. Chairman, if the board is inclined, I think we need to have a motion second and vote to set a public hearing for the next commissioners' meeting.
Some move.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. I hope I didn't disappoint, Mr. Chairman.
You all, you never do, Mr. Brady, you never do. Now, here comes the highlight.
I was waiting for it. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to update you on several things we've got going on. One is a reminder, and you'll note in your agenda, you're going to recess this meeting till July eighteenth at eight-thirty, which is Thursday morning. We do have an item related to our hurricane recovery, and the convention center will need to be dealt with that morning. So when you end today, please recess at that point. The chairman and I, along with our planning staff, attended a meeting last week at Havelock High School dealing with the Miller Boulevard changes. Mr. Chairman, are you going to talk about that in your comments?
Go ahead, sir.
What we got is a project that's slated for 2023 that will create a better flow of traffic along Miller Boulevard in Havelock once the bypass is open. So lesson learned from DOT after the Goldsboro-Wayne County bypass, great road, terrible ways to get on and off of it. So what they're trying to do is get ahead of that, create the on and off places before the bypass goes on. One of those areas and the main access to Havelock after the bypass will be Miller Boulevard. It starts around the Lake Road corridor, runs all the way to what we call the Havelock Industrial Park at Outer Banks Drive. There'll be several traffic shifts, particularly, most notably, a roundabout at Lake Road, which will sever the tie from Lake Road into Church Street. So now you'll go around a roundabout, actually go, I believe that's north, and then you'll come back to get on Church Road that way. You'll also see significant improvements at the intersection of Highway Seventy and Miller Boulevard. There will be now two lanes going toward the base entrance and two lanes going straight through what we call Down One-O-One. And you'll see significant changes at each of the intersections as you move down. The chair and I have shared some information with Board of Education. There will be some significant changes at a couple of intersections affecting schools. So moving forward, 2021, they'll be starting to begin the purchase of right-of-way. They're doing an environmental permit right now, hope to have that in the next several months, and then planning and design and getting going on it. We will, and I spoke with Mr. Hodges about it, more than likely, I think it's sixty-six percent chance we'll lose one of our facilities in Havelock to the widening of the road, which is our magistrate's office down there. Once we get a clear picture, Gene and I will come back and kind of share with you some options. Obviously, we'll have to negotiate with DOT about what we'll get for the building and whether they'll take it or not, so. Moving forward, I had Stanley talk to you a little bit about the CREST meeting, Director Sprayberry from Emergency Management was down last week. Great meeting. Stanley covered all the highlights. Again, we continue to emphasize that the decision-making is already hard enough locally. The more options we have inland to tell our folks, the better and easier our decision-making gets. We were overwhelmed last year with the amount of people that heeded our advice, which is good, but they also need some information on where they're supposed to go, and that's one of the important things we're trying to work forward. We also, I wanted to note to the board, we'll make a presentation to you in the next couple of weeks. The state has directed us to create zone-based evacuation. We'll have three zones in Craven County, an A, B, and a C. It will require a good bit of education. We're working with our larger departments, they've already left, like Health and DSS. It will be also working with our municipal partners there to get the message out. We will have different processes set up when we release a zone to an evacuation. We'll be using our Code Red system, we'll be using social media, we'll be using traditional media. We'll go door-to-door if we've got to. We'll continue using the same things we have, but again, it'll be zone-based. I will tell you, if we were to have another Florence scenario like we had last spring, I'm knocking wood, it would be an all-zone type deal. I mean, this, that's not going to change. But, but if we had a Matthew, we'll have a zone that'll be more dictated to that western riverine flooding and then work the other areas. We also, the chair and I attended a meeting down at Wallace last week of the Eastern Alliance for Recovery. It was a group that started out of the city of Wilmington in Pender County, right after the storm, advocating both at the state and the federal level for different action items to help with resiliency and recovery. It is certainly now transitioning more to resiliency, Mr. Chair, than recovery. However, there are still some bills and things that are coming out, which we will hopefully see money from to continue, continue here in Craven along with those other places. But resiliency is a, is a tough one. It means a lot of things to a lot of different people, and it requires a significant amount of change. But they, the one, the one group that I thought was very interesting they had there was the Pew Charitable Trust, who takes on sort of challenging issues, and they're funded, of course, through the Pew Foundation, so they don't actually actively seek money, they work off a trust, but they look to solve things. And one of the things they've tried to tackle in the United States is resiliency, and they have some interesting ideas and things moving forward. Some of it'll work for us, some of it won't. You know, there's things that'll work in the city of Wilmington that will not work in western Craven County. So we'll have to kind of balance that, but I'm glad we're having the conversation. I know the chair enjoyed and got to participate a little bit more than I did at the table, but we will hope to continue participating with the group and see if anything comes out of that. Mr. Chair, board, that's all I have, unless you have things for me.
Board, have any questions for the manager? Sir, we appreciate it. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, Commissioners' report. Commissioner Booker?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Jones?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mitchell?
I do have something, sir. I attended the hospital board meeting last Monday, a public meeting, and we tried to have one of the commissioners there. It was very helpful. We have a new chair and a vice chair. Changes of leadership, I think, will be significant. Just for some updates of general interest, the Cancer Center is scheduled to be open in, in mid-September, then they've still got to stock it and get it ready to go. It may make the mid-September deadline, or it may slide a few weeks, but we're getting close. If you've driven by there, you'll see that they're working on the parking lot. If you have looked in the bottom floor as you drove by, you will notice it looks like an awful lot of girders sitting there. That is because they are finishing the facility from the top down, as opposed from the bottom up, which I did not know. The Diagnostic Center is running later. That's because it's two different construction standards with the Cancer Center is essentially business standards of construction. Diagnostic Center is a whole different ballgame because you've got shielding, radiation. It's a much more complex structure to be, to be built, but so they're both coming along. The end is in sight. Worked on the new DMV facility at, I call it Craven Thirty, that was West New Bern. Slabs down, walls are going up. It's slated to be done March-ish, and it is running a few weeks ahead of schedule. I had a town hall in Riverbend last Tuesday. Number of citizens came forward, which I appreciate. We had about a two-hour collegial discussion. Some of the topics, recycling is still big. I don't think a lot of people realize the, the cost of, I'm going to call it garbage, garbage and recycling, because one of the questions, why didn't you add this on as a county tax item? I think people thought it was going to be a quarter cent or a half cent. The faces changed when I said it would have been a three cent to cover it with it. We discussed wind energy issues. We, confusion in terms of what was the actual impact on the base. But interestingly, one of the questions that I asked was, okay, if there were tax increases, how would you feel about it and what would you support? And the answers that I got back from everybody there was, it depends on the issue. And I said, okay, what are your priorities? And they were education, the animal shelter, and law enforcement. And the end of the discussion was citizen concerned about the drug epidemic, support to increase law enforcement, what we're doing about it, but it clearly is in, very much in everybody's mind. I'm having a town hall in, here at County Admin in this meeting on the twenty-third of July, from five o'clock to seven o'clock, for ideas, questions, concerns. Want to reach out and talk to your commissioner. And I will also be having one in Trent Woods on the sixteenth of August that will be going out on county, city, and municipality websites over the next few days. Thank you, sir. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Sampson?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to ask the support of all, all the citizens of New Bern and Craven County because we're having a big problem concerning the Standard White Gym that's located in the Duffield Field area. We've been working on, seemed like, seemed like they want to move it. City, seemed like the city wants to move it, but the citizens want to remain where it said. And for a simple reason, we have so many young people in that area that that gym is easy to get to. And when you have to transport them from one place to another, you don't have, first thing, you don't have no transportation for them. A lot of them have to walk across town to the other gym, and this is going to create a problem, not only for that community, but it's going, going to create a problem with our law enforcement. Because, you know, kids are going to be kids, and once they begin to go in a different area, first thing, the people, a lot of people that, the area they're going in, don't want them coming through there, they don't have no transportation, they're going to have to walk. And when kids walk, they're going to be playing, a lot of them, a lot of them going to create some crime. So if you can keep them in a place that they're satisfied in, in a place that they're comfortable in, then we're going to save problems, both money-wise and jail-wise. Because it seems like most of the time when a problem occur, the only place left and the policeman go there is take them to the jail, take them to court. This is going to cost money in two ways. Going to cost money for the jail, going to cost money for the court. So we're coming together and being concerned that we want to support all our citizens, that we want them to have the best recreation, to keep them off the streets and keep crime down. We're going to save money a lot. We're going to save money a lot of ways than we would have if we just take and move that Standard White Gym in another area. So this, this is why I'm asking citizens to work together on. I know so, in the community, we have a lot of people coming forth now that wasn't coming forth before that are interested in letting the Standard White Gym remain where it's at. And I feel like if we would work together and do this, then we're going to save everybody's benefit. Especially the taxpayer. Taxpayer, a lot of them always rumbling about paying taxes. Then this is one of the ways that you can cut, cut your taxes. Get involved, help those people who cannot help themselves. That's all I have.
Vice Chair?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was very happy. Two weeks ago, I requested a $500 donation to the Craven County Animal Hospital, uh, hospital, to the Craven County Animal Shelter to give us a donation, the Bridgerton Rotary, and they so did two weeks ago. And it should be in the paper in the next couple of days, I believe, but this certainly goes a long way to helping us out in that animal shelter. The other thing is, I will be holding a town hall meeting in District One at the Community Center in Broad Creek Road in Fairfield Harbor on the twenty-fourth of July from two to four in the afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. A couple of things, Manager, relate on. On the, on the extension on Miller Boulevard, that's for the twenty, that's 2023, but they're looking to find funding to move that up. So that could be faster, which means that we need to be prepared when the leadership teams comes to us because I think Manager's pretty optimistic on the numbers he had, but I'm almost positive we're going to lose that facility, that we'll have to find. We got four, we got four departments down in that building down in Havelock that operates out of that. So we'll need to be prepared to go on that. The Resiliency Board that we went to, the committee we went to, was our first invite. Well worth it. A lot of counties involved. I mean, I thought we were hurt and we were damaged, which we were, but seeing some of the areas down there where we had complete roads and dams break and towns completely gone, it was walking. They've asked us, or asked myself, and I brought it to the manager, they are looking to come up here for their next meeting. I told them we would not be able to accept them if it was not after the first of October, since we don't have a place big enough. So if they can hold their meeting sometime mid-October, then we will may host them and have them up here to hold, to hold this resiliency. And then I'll have all the board members go and just sit in and see what's going on and what's, what's happening there.
How many people attended that meeting, would you guess?
Ooh, probably seventy?
I'd say seventy to a hundred, depending.
Yeah.
There was kind of odd arrangement, how you.
Oh, yeah. I mean, they had to, you had the square table with all the elected officials, then you had the staff. Yeah, it was seventy, a hundred people. It was, it was big. And then you had the, you had the state, you had the new office person that's handling.
Our recovery.
Recovery Center, Spradberry staff, DOT staff. I mean, there was a lot of people there, a lot of people there. There's a lot of things going on, a lot of moving parts that's happening and everything else. I like to thank staff for everything, getting us through the budget. I know we've said that before. We're actually now starting to put that in progress and, and going. We're still getting comments out and still getting inquiries. If we could ask staff to put something out on the Facebook page on the recycling, just remind people, it's not picking up right now. It's still going to go until probably October, one October before, but just keep reminding them out there. We're still getting calls on that. And I want this board to be aware of something that I have done, so you hear it from me personally on, on, on this. Two weeks ago, I had a meeting with Dana Alaw, Mayor, and it's in relation to carts. I'm getting hit, and I know staff is getting hit, and you may be getting hit, that they're not happy with the way we operate and are running carts. So I had a meeting with him, explained my thoughts, and at the resiliency, the vice mayor, Jeff Oldham, the manager, and Kim from their urban transportation part of it. And this is what I told them, that I gave them the opportunity to come before this board, that if they asked, I would put it on the agenda, that they could come in at any time, as long as I was chair, because it's up to each chair, on what they want to do. That I would put it on there, that they could come before this board to ask to take over the urban carts. If they don't think that we're doing a good enough job, or if they're not happy with the way we are doing it, and they have no buy-in, and they don't want a partner, they have the right to ask this board. Now, it's up to this board whether they want to give it to them or not. But I'm going to put them on the spot if they want it or they don't want it, but I'm a little bit fed up of hearing how bad of a job we're doing with carts. So if you hear it from any of the other officials out there, yes, I did tell them, and it's still there. And I think they have that right, because it's hard for us to sit up here to try where we have a study that was done four years ago and says you're not going to succeed unless you have municipality buy-in. Now, for the last four years, we've tried to get buy-in, and they don't want to buy in. And it's a good example, last week, when they don't want to buy in. So we're going to move it, and again, like I say, I'm appreciative of what this board did. We've got to try, but I wanted you all to hear that from me. And from that, I'll entertain a motion to recess. Now, before I ask that, Mr. Johnny, can you be here Thursday, eight-thirty?
Please.
Tom?
Denny?
Jason?
All right, we got five, so we got enough.
Commissioner Kay said he'd be here.
Okay. We have to have a policy on that because we're going to approve, hopefully, we'll approve the Tourism Event Center. Yes, sir.
Okay, that's my question. What, what's the main purpose?
Yes, sir.
Just one purpose.
Yeah, it's one, one issue, and it'll be, Gene's going to receive bids.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow for the convention center, and to have the turnaround we want, because it's, I believe, July has five Mondays in it. So we actually have another week built in. We need to go ahead and get started, not delay the project.
Based on that, I'll entertain, entertain a motion to recess until zero eight-thirty on Thursday, July eighteenth.
Some moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're recessed.